You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Welcome to the Boss Hogg Liberty Podcast. This is episode number 207 of East San Antonio's Favorite Podcast. I'm Jeremiah Morley. Today I'm joined by, rejoined by executive video producer, audio engineer Zach Bircham, and my co-host for the second week in a row, Mr. Jesse Riddle.
Howdy, howdy.
What are we doing today, Jesse?
It looks like we're going to talk about with the primary election candidates for the series for commissioner, correct?
Indeed.
That's not on our show notes. Joey Cooper and Joe Wiley.
And we just happened to have them both in the room.
Yeah, we just happened to, Joey Cooper is on my left and Joe Wiley is on my right. And then we're going to talk about what Henry County looks like. Some land use stuff, Memorial Park's future. Am I doing all right, John?
You're doing great.
All right.
I'm honestly very impressed.
I was like, am I supposed to be reading these?
I was expecting you to say today's episode topic read, and then we were just gonna laugh at you. And you're doing, you're actually, you're out beyond your skis and I'm very excited.
Perfect. I just didn't know if I was supposed to be reading these.
Yeah, it's, what do you think's gonna happen?
I don't know.
All right.
And then we're trying to figure out what the market assets, marketable assets are of Henry County and the priorities between our two candidates here. And the detention center open, we're apparently still talking about backyard chickens.
Yep, this was Dakota's big plan that he hatched.
Oh, nice.
That we were gonna talk about the chicken.
And Spiceland.
But yeah.
Also, Spiceland backyard chickens around too. And how much time should a commissioner devote to the job? And should the Henry County, or should Henry County retain the food and beverage tax? So then we're gonna have some final thoughts.
We'll see how, how far we get through all of that. It should be, it should be a fun and entertaining show. And we have the ability to wander as needed. This show is about our lives in rural Indiana. We're here to push your boundaries and make you think as individuals. Sometimes we provoke you, other times we'll make you laugh, but hopefully you'll always learn something new. If you join the Patreon at any level, you get, you get the Patreon audio email directly into your inbox and a special RSS feed for your iTunes or podcast addict, or however podcasts are sold these days. Whatever catcher you like to use, you can, you get those dropped right in. And a super special Facebook group where the cast interacts with you and shares, shares a little bit of fun stuff. And the show notes, you get the show notes in advance, usually two, three, four hours before, before showtime. We just did about 15 minutes over there and Jesse explained his gambling strategies. And all the success he's been having.
You should sign up for the Patreon so you can learn my gambling, my gambling strategy.
You can get his, you can get his notes, his system. It's marketable.
And you're missing, like, you're missing, you're missing one of the big NCAA games going on right now.
The big, the, Jesse really has what I would call the, the X factor. You bet on teams that start with X, no matter what the sport, you just bet on teams where their name starts with X. All right. We do have to also say thank you to, to our sponsor. The, the podcast is sponsored for the election series, the primary election series, by Wyland's Flowers, the slick pickle and big bounce inflatables. But this show in particular is Wyland's Flowers, which is the official flower florist of everybody on Boss Hogg Liberty when we've gotten married. We've all used Brianna and, and the folks at Wyland's.
I think Valentine's Day, I went there for my, took my mother there, so.
And they, they also hook up, hooked up my, my wonderful bride on Valentine's Day. We got off of a cruise ship and Sarah said, that's not enough. I, you still need to send me flowers. We got off on a Saturday. I think the Monday was, was the holiday and I jumped, jumped in real quick with them. And by four o'clock, a beautiful bouquet was delivered.
Perfect. It was Slim Pickens when I was there.
The folks at Wyland's took good care of us.
Don't wait till the last minute to buy flowers.
But if you do, and you can do it at any time.
No, they still hooked us up. I'm just saying.
And we had, we had Wyland's Flowers in here just two weeks ago.
Nice.
Because Nancy Custer sent Dakota a nice, a nice meat basket and, and flowers.
Perfect.
Phenomenal stuff. All right. Zach, we got a merch link. Is that, is that, do you still do that? Do you remember how that part works?
I'm working on that. I was working on linking Wyland's Flowers Facebook page. And then I will then copy and like, I guess I'm working on all the links.
For being, for being unpaid. He sure is grumpy. Man, I guess you can still get your pandemic masks over at the T-Chip store and all kinds of different t-shirts as well. T-shirts, hoodies, all, all the Balls Hog merch. Plenty, plenty of fun stuff. Let's, let's get into it a little bit. Let's, let's learn about the candidates, see what, see what, what's got them motivated to run. This is the seat, if, if folks have been with us for a long time, Ed Tarantino was on with us four years ago in the primary and in the general election, and Ed was elected county commissioner. Ed is retiring after, after four years, and these two fine gentlemen have stepped up and said, yes, I'm signing up. I want, I want to get in on this government stuff. So let's, let's start with Joe Wiley on my, on my right. And Joe, introduce yourself to folks and how, how in the world did you decide, you know what I need to do? I need, I need to be a county commissioner?
Well, obviously I did not decide that I wanted to be county commissioner until I heard that Ed Tarantino was not going to run for a second term, which meant that the seat would be open. So having served in county government by administering the county highway department for a number of years, I, and having been through many, many commissioner meetings and council meetings. And I, I thought that I would be able to add something. And so that's why I decided to run.
And tell us about yourself a little bit. If folks are unfamiliar with you, what's your, what's your background?
My high school graduation was from Rushville Consolidate High School. I then attended Vincent's University on a two-year associate, a science degree in law enforcement. I transferred my credits to Ball State University where I received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and corrections. I then got a job with the Indiana State Police and during the first four or five years, I was strictly a trooper assigned to Henry County. And then I went back to Ball State during taking day classes and working in the evening. And I was attempting to get my teaching degree in industrial education. I did my student teaching at Muncie Southside and all the while I was still a full-time trooper. And at the, at the conclusion of my Ball State time, I had three more classes to finish my teaching degree. But I didn't finish it because then the Indiana State Police, after a period of years, put me in the position of an instructor at the Law Enforcement Academy. So I taught at the Indiana State Police Law Enforcement Academy for a number of years. And it was much easier than teaching high school shop class because when you walked into the class as an instructor, they would snap to the position of attention until you told them to take their seats and, and things were much calmer there. And industrial education classes at, at Muncie Southside, which I enjoyed very much working with the students. But I was more concerned about them cutting their fingers off with the jigsaw. Safety seemed to be a major concern. But at any rate, I have those, that educational background in addition to the number of educational programs I've been involved with, with the, when I was with the Indiana State Police. I served 25 years, 17 years as a trooper, a year and a half as a corporal. And then six years as a sergeant in Training Division where the staff and, and myself, we teach the students how to shoot, fight and drive and, and be proper gentlemen and hopefully uphold the laws of state of Indiana. And then I came back from the academy and served as an investigator here in Henry County for about a year and a half. And then I took my retirement. Subsequently, I started working for the Henry County Highway Department as the administrator and served there for 15 and a half years. And during that time, I, I went to many educational courses through Purdue University that serves as, as the liaison for the local technical assistance program. All of the local governments in Indiana are allowed to take classes there. So I've received a, a degree as a road builder and then another degree as a master road builder with my time there. And I served as a president for the Indiana Association of Highway Engineers and Supervisors. During that time, I was on the Association of Indiana Counties Board of Directors and also on the LTAT Board of Directors.
And one real quick follow-up question from, from Kristy Avery, who's, who's one of our patrons. So she gets to ask these questions. She says, no lady troopers?
Absolutely. There were many lady troopers through the years and I had the opportunity to serve as, in the academy. There were 620 troopers that went through while I was there. And there were many female troopers and a wide variety of troopers.
Awesome. All right. So Joey, let's, let's spend some time with you. Tell us, tell us about yourself, what you've been doing, what your background is.
All right. Well, my name is Joey Cooper. I live up towards the Middletown area. I used to be out in the country, but just like lots of people out there in podcast land who've dealt with government, I had to deal with the government many, many years ago. I had a septic issue. I wanted to repair my septic tank. The health board said, you're too close to a municipality that has sewers.
You had to tie in.
You gotta tie in. So I went to the town and I said, I want to tie in my house here. And they said, we're not currently tying in anyone who's not in the city limits. The old catch 22.
So rock and hard place.
So I am now annexed into, I voluntarily annexed my property into the city or the town of Middletown. So I used to tell people I was Fall Creek Township resident, only now I do live in Middletown due to that technicality.
You didn't even have to move to get to the city.
Did not have to move.
I, I say stuff a lot like Sarah Palin. I live in Henry Township, but I can see Newcastle from my front porch.
I love it.
Five doors down from the city limits where they have much higher taxes.
So I'm married. My wife Carrie and I have been married two decades. We have three children. They are 14, 14 and 10, all students at Shenandoah. I've been the holder of many different jobs over the years. Currently I'm a paramedic firefighter at the City of Anderson Fire Department. Before that, I was a county employee here in Henry County for nine years. And served various jobs there, including a paramedic supervisor, as well as director of the ambulance service. Prior to that, I was an educator at St. Vincent's Hospital in Indianapolis where I served in the paramedic education department. I've also been a professional photographer as well as several other jobs over the years, so.
All right. So tell us, I guess, and we'll get to back to Joe on this as well, but Joey, what motivates you? And you, obviously it's an open seat and we need to have a county, a northern district county commissioner. But what makes you look at it and say, this is the time I want to jump in and I want to get involved in this race?
Sure. That's a great question. Part of it is, is experience. As a, as a county employee for many years, I, I got a view, just like Joe did, of how the commissioners operate, what the job of the commissioners are. I feel like a large percentage of our population doesn't even know the job exists or what the job would be. And then I feel strongly that there needs to be civility in government. Sometimes we get a lot of one-issue candidates. They're mad about something, their septic system needs hooked up. So they're running for county council because they didn't get hooked up like they wanted. And I feel strongly that the people that need to be in office need to be people of integrity, people of experience who are ready for the next challenge, not fighting the last battle that was happening. So an example of that would be any kind of controversy you've had in the past in the county.
We have a list of them coming.
Oh, I saw. So I was looking through it and the one that caught my eye was Newcastle Motorsports Park. Cause that's near and dear to my heart. I love driving fast. I've, I've raced out there before. I've got a great story about breaking my arm out there. But a lot of people don't remember when that came to the county, how that, how that worked and actually.
It was originally supposed to be out in the Knightstown area.
Knightstown.
In Spiceland.
Yeah. And there was actually a pretty good group of citizens and people that were against it. And of course that looks silly 20 years later, you know, here we are in 2022 and we're going, you know, in 2003, we're all upset that there was going to be some go-karts and financially it's worked out. From a putting us on the map standpoint, it's worked out. It's a great racing facility. They, they do a great job out there. But at one point, there were a lot of people who were against it. And so we need people in office who are looking towards the future, making the right judgment calls on these types of issues. We don't know what that's going to be. We don't know three years from now, what development is coming, what, what issue we're going to be talking about. So I feel very strongly that you need people who are passionate about civility in government. We all have to respect each other's views and, and truly treat people like we want to be treated. I've had a lot of good interactions with government. There's a lot of good people in government, but there are people that get in, like I said, for single issue, they're mad about something and then they don't know a thing about the rest of the issues out there. And I would say that would be my biggest motivation is looking at, there's not an issue that I'm passionate about right now other than wanting someone in there who's gonna make the right call in the future for that issue that we don't even know is gonna happen.
And Joe, tell me about your, your motives and, and what says, okay, 2022 is the year I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in and I want to run. I want to, I want this, I want this responsibility.
Probably as, as much as anything from having served for the number of years that I did with the highway department and having attended so many commissioner and council meetings. And like Joey mentioned, that the single purpose, sometimes there's a single purpose that motivates someone. I, I sat through the years of, of a lot of different issues of which some of them that are listed on this piece of paper that we'll get to soon. But I guess most importantly, I need to say, I am married and have been married for 20 years to my lovely wife Brenda. Between the two of us, we have six children, 18 grandchildren. Thank you, Joey, for pointing that out. But back to the, why I decided to run, I don't, I don't have a single specific issue, but I know someone needs to be in there that is informed, that can make decisions and that can work with, with many individuals throughout the county. And that not only includes throughout the county, but you have a lot of opportunities to work with statewide organizations also that would bring ideas to the county that will help Henry County grow and stay strong.
All right. So Jesse, you can help me expand on this, but the, the first issue that I wanted to get into, the first topic I wanted to get into is, is how, what does Henry County look like in 10 years? We, and Joey tipped on this a little bit earlier, but what do we think the community needs to do to be ready for the next 10 years? To embrace whatever's coming next?
Uh, that's a good question.
And as a, as a young millennial or a middle-aged millennial living in, living in Knightstown, it's gotta be an issue that matters to you is how Henry County can be relevant for, to retain somebody like you.
Yeah.
You've got one of those big city jobs and you commute, but you choose to live here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think probably just trying to build out infrastructure for things that people care about. As far as recreational, it's probably gonna be a big thing, I would imagine, the next 10 years. You know, younger people like to get out and walk around and move a little bit more than I would say like the generation, my generation, like my generation and above. And probably partner a lot with hopefully the, trying to remember the department Economic Development Committee or Group or whatever they're called, to try to score more like white collar jobs. I feel like that's total, that is almost completely missing for the most part in, in this county. There's some hybrid, right? There's like blue collar, white collar facilities, but there's not like just an office. So.
You just feel like if somebody's gonna get a job here, it's, in the Courier Today, you had a great example. It was about four different factories in town that are, that are hiring and what they're looking for. You go work at Boars Head or TS Tech or whatever.
The county needs to diversify their employment. So otherwise you're gonna have the same problem they had 30 years ago. Like eventually the factories will move somewhere else because they're gonna find cheaper labor.
So Joe, how do you, how do you set up Henry County for the next decade? What's, what's, what's your view, I guess? Your, your vision, so to speak?
Based on what I've been reading and hearing here in the last few weeks, not that it's going to be so many white collar jobs, but it's my understanding that Boars Head is actually going to double in size, which obviously would mean more jobs available. And I also heard that TS Tech was in the process of, of, of creating more jobs. They happen to be two, two employers that when they first came to Henry County, it was like the biggest news that we'd had for a long time back in 2006 when TS Tech first came and said they were gonna build a factory there. It was very well welcomed and right there in the industrial park. And then the same with Boars Head. It was just an incredible opportunity for a lot of people to get a job. And one of the things that mentioned about Knightstown, Indiana, for instance, one of the, one of the, the opportunities that is being created by the food and beverage tax, which will be spoken about later, is there's going to be some wifi expansion in, in Knightstown. And that's going to be something that's a positive. And I think they're doing the broadband, I believe. They just talked about that last couple of meetings that they've had. But obviously the, I live in a rural part of Henry County that I do have wifi, but it's, it's not as strong as sometimes I think I wish it were, were. But that's something that would be something that would be a positive for.
So for, you live in, I assume either Blue River or Prairie Township, somewhere up in the northeastern portion of the county?
Stony Creek Township.
You're the one guy.
Stony Creek Township, the golden gem of Henry County.
I honestly, did you have to drive to Richmond to get here? The one, the one highway that goes through Stony Creek goes to Muncie and Richmond, so.
No, I'm US 36 to 103 and I'm right here.
And straight on down. What, what kind of broadband is available in Stony Creek? Is it?
Well, I have a, I have New Lisbon Telephone Telegraph Telewoman. But they are very good. It's a very good company and they have provided us with, with broad, with, with internet service for several years. My antenna just blew off a couple of days ago. They came right up, fixed it, no problem. So we have internet. And what I have is what's available. And I'm certain that there are other locations that have much faster internet.
Yeah. So the broadband that you're able to use is the, what comes off of a grain tower or something and hit your house?
That is correct. It's probably line of sight for them. It is line of sight, yes.
Gotcha. Awesome. Joey, what's, other than fixing Joe's internet and getting him to something from the last five years and getting that fiber out to his house, what, what, what's Henry County look like in 10 years?
Well, I think the important thing to look at and is quality of life. I mean, that's what it comes down to. People don't want government to intrude in their lives, but they are looking for the different units of government to work together to make this a better place to live. Up there in Middletown, one of the things that they recently did was they converted one of the old railroad tracks into a walking, running, biking path. And I happen to know that that project has been in the works for over 20 years. It takes a lot of effort from a lot of people to make things like that happen. But they finally paved it. I go out there and run. My kids roller skate out there. It's awesome to have that, but it takes a lot of effort. And it's not just one unit of government, it's multiple different units. They received a grant, but then they have to get approval from this group and that group. And it took some people involved in government a long time to make that happen. But that's what people are looking for. Obviously internet is a big deal. People need to work from home. They need to be able to have their kids stream all the important YouTube stuff that they stream.
Watch, watch, watch an educational podcast at home on seven o'clock on a Thursday night?
I know if you guys have ever heard.
Your county commissioners are?
I don't know if you guys have ever heard of Norris Nuts, but they're a family from Australia. It's very important that we watch their daily activities every day on YouTube. We need to know what this family's doing.
With no data caps.
So, but it really, it comes down to quality of life. People are looking for those services from government, not intrusion from government. Sometimes those are, are tough issues for people because all of those services, all that quality of life, it costs money. People don't like taxes. They don't like that intrusion of government. However, when, when you're talking about making the county succeed, that's what it all comes down to. It is looking at, how can we make this where people want to raise families?
So the next, the next item that I have, that I have in our little primer here is, is it something that Zach and I talk about all the time? Is we're, you know, we're sitting around the campfire and we're like, what, what's, what can Henry County do better? And he said, he tells me, well, they gotta quit with these open door violations. I'm not making it up, Zach. This is literally Zach's, Zach's big topic. He brings up all the time to me is that this keeps happening. So I, I almost feel like the pandemic is the reason why we know we've had these problems because we've had meetings recorded on Zoom and, you know, some of the commissioners have had conversations. Maybe they're innocent, maybe they're, they're not realizing that they're, they're making decisions outside of meetings. But we've, we've continued to see citizen activists file lawsuits with the, with the state of Indiana or file complaints. And the state says, yes, you, Henry County, you've made a mistake and you're taking, you're doing activity outside of commissioners meetings. For the last four years, as we've hosted the show, I've heard, I think every candidate to a T has said, yes, transparency, yes, transparency. We've seen that there are now live streams, again, of, of meetings produced by the county that are up on YouTube that we can watch. And you've, you've seen some additional, some additional record for the public to, to, to observe what's happening. But we seem to have an issue where the county commissioner's office, not, and that's not anybody sitting in this room. These are, these are both two new gentlemen. They're looking for the, for the seat. But county government keeps getting its hands slapped with the door violations. Joe, do you have any comment on how, what we can do better? What needs to change? If it's, is it, is the state law too restrictive? Is the county need to have a different process? What, what can we do to keep getting in hot water?
I think from my personal experience, if I were to serve as a Henry County Commissioner, one of the first things I'd want to do is to get up to speed on what the laws are. There's a county commissioners conference held every year that goes over a lot of the basic rules and regulations that you have to adhere to. I'm aware of many of them, but as you have spoken about, I am also aware that there have been some violations. I wasn't there and didn't, didn't realize that type of violation was going on, but I read about it in the newspaper and so forth. I, I don't, I just can't imagine trying to do something behind closed doors when you know you're a public servant and you're there to serve the public. And the open door concept is one that I would be very much adhering to and do my best to, to, to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Joey, from your side, do you have any views on?
Well, not from a county side, but from a state side, the, the office of public access counselor is only a counselor. When they have these violations, they come in and this happens all over the state. It's not just Henry County that's had these violations. This happens frequently. The counselor come in, they will look at the state law and they'll say, okay, here's our opinion. They'll even come in and do education. I believe, if I didn't hear wrong, they actually came in and did education for Henry County government officials on this the first time. The problem is there's, there's no teeth to these statutes. The, the state law basically is that this person counsels government on this. And then it takes someone actually suing government. So somebody's gotta go hire an attorney and make a big deal out of it. So many times these violations happen and if no citizen feels strongly enough to hire an attorney, they're not gonna do anything about it, even if it happens over and over and over again. So that could be something the state could look at changing. Obviously that would not be very popular with most sitting elected officials. They, they, they don't want the bother of that. But the, the office does a good job in counseling, but that's as much power as they have.
I, of course, water went down the wrong pipe, so I'm gonna struggle for a moment, Jesse. You may have to, you may have to step up, tag team in here. The, Zach, do you have anything else on that side, on that, on that issue? Do you feel like you're, you're satisfied?
His topic, so you should probably speak to it.
Okay. In my defense, if people read the paper, it wasn't just the open door violations. It was what they did with the first open door violation and how that kind of came around on them a year and a half later when somebody got arrested. But, but like, we could just move on. Yeah. I mean, I understand, the one thing I will say with the commissioners, I bet with some of it, it was that a couple of them ran together like as a group, as a team. And so I bet it's really hard to then not meet and chat as a team outside of meetings, but they need to learn to do that if you get elected.
And I'll comment on this a little bit. I've been to a lot of different government meetings over the years for different reasons. And it is very obvious to someone in the audience, which group has already had a prior meeting to decide what they're talking about and which groups haven't. I, I've been to government meetings where I see shouting matches and people yelling and getting upset.
Where there's debate happening. Where there's debate happening.
Those are the meetings you go, wow, this is interesting. But the vast majority of meetings, you don't see that. And you go, wow, these guys are really professional. It's almost like it's scripted. And there are, there are school boards, there are town government that you go to these and, and I know exactly what's happening, but I don't think a lot of the public kind of keys in that this is scripted. They've already decided these issues that we're having a hearing about something that's important to this neighborhood. But the hearing is just a formality. We've already made the decision. Um, and that's unfortunate.
So am I hearing from you that your view on, on a commissioner's meeting is that you'll make your decisions in the room when you're there? Or do you have an expectation that, hey, I'm running for office and what I'm talking about today is what I'm going to believe two years from now when I'm a county commissioner?
Well, I, I think it would be legal to make those decisions ahead of time. And I think Joe agrees completely that that's the purpose of those meetings. And the idea of letting the public there so that they can see how those decisions are made. So if you're trying to get around that, you're hiding something from the public and none of these decisions, as Joe said, should be made in private.
All right. I think we've, I think we've flogged that one to the end of time. So let's move on to the ever popular topic of land use in Henry County. This is the bane of, of our existence and I've, I've been calling it the third rail of Henry County politics for the last decade and it's, it's continued to, to fester and just become frustrating. And I hope, I, I really do hope that we can find a way that, you know, when we're talking 10 years from now, it's not over government deciding how we're going to live together, but we're going to, we're going to go here. I have a list of projects that I, that are, they're in the show notes. If you're a patron, you've got this. But we've had, we've had county commissioners and planning commissions that have turned down asphalt plants, ethanol facilities, solar farms, wind farms, and just simply rezoning the, the property on 300 South that I guess is now targeted to be a youth sports facility, but it was, it was in 2018. It was a major controversy of being potentially like commercial and commissioners allowing that. Every single property seemed, and development seems to be a political hot topic issue. Should the commissioners be getting involved? And I guess we should start with Joe because we just finished with Joey. Should the commissioners be getting involved in arbitrating each of these zoning decisions on specific projects? Or is it, hey, the zoning administrator does their job and, and it, the rules are what they are?
It's my understanding, the way it works now is the zoning administrator, obviously in the, in the zoning board makes their recommendation and the commissioners can either choose to accept them or, or reject that, that particular issue. The, the events that you've mentioned, the asphalt plant, the ethanol plant, the wind and the solar, all of those topics were covered in commissioner meetings and planning and zoning meetings during the time while I was working at the county highway department. The asphalt plant, for instance, was, seemed to be a logical thing to happen in Henry County since if Henry County roads need to be paved, they need to go to someplace out of county to get the hot mixed asphalt. Trucking is a huge cost to, to building roads. So the concept of having a plant located in Henry County, for one, was going to at some point reduce the cost of making hot mixed asphalt roads in Henry County. The plant was, was turned down on two different occasions. And it was as a result of the, the citizens saying, no, not here, not, not, not here. So it went through the process and it was turned down. And the ethanol, there were two ethanol plants that were originally received approval. One was north of town, one was out east of town. And then there was a change of, of commissioners and, and then they ended up saying, no, it's, it's not approved. It's no, no go. At that time, it seemed like there were a lot of people that were excited about selling their corn to the plant that would be located in Henry County, rather than going up into Randolph County or down into Shelby County. That, that didn't happen. And then started what to this point is probable, has probably been about a nine year, uh, topic of the wind. And started out with a, with a company that came in and they had a local salesman that came in and gave a spiel to the commissioners and to the planning board about how we're going to build these turbines, going to bring lots of money. There were a number of people, there were all the commissioners, all the council members and some other citizens. We took a trip up to White County after they had constructed their wind turbines. If you go north on 65 North of Indianapolis, on the west, on the west side of the road is Benton County. And they have wind turbines and on the right side of the road or the east side of the road is a White County. And we toured the wind turbines in White County. And you would drive around county roads that were 24 foot wide and had large ditches on each side. And everything looks so pleasant and so nice. But one thing that was missing was houses. It was in a very rural part of White County and White County is the same place where Indiana, the park is up there, Indiana, Indiana Beach. But White, Indiana Beach is located in the northern part of the county. So the southern part of the county is where all these wind turbines were. And, uh, it was very impressive. Now, if you go over to Benton County, when they started their turbine, the wind industrial turbines, uh, they came in and built the turbines. Then they redid the roads because they just completely demolished the roads. White County said, no, we're not going to do that. You're going to fix our roads and then you can build your turbines. And they did. And White County residents, the number of one, the number of residents that we spoke with as a, as a group from Henry County to go up there and visit, we spoke with a lot of friendly people and a lot of happy people that were getting money from these wind turbine companies. But once again, not a lot of population where the turbines were located. You could drive a mile, a mile square and there might be one or two houses and, and four or five or 10 or 12 turbines. That's what I saw when I was up there. Came back to Henry County and, and then as the years went on and the commissioner meetings became very, very immersed in anti-wind. And so for a period of years, it was, um, very apparent that the majority of the vocal population of Henry County were definitely not in favor of wind. That was, that's what I saw. And then the solar kind of came along as the newest, newest thing. And obviously we have some solar farms in Henry County that are owned by public utilities. And then there's one that's going in in Henry County now down in the southern part of Henry County. And it's, uh, appears to be a rather large operation from what I've seen of down there. They, at this point that they've trashed the road, but I think they're going to, to do something about that. But it, it seems as though that the Bob Seger song about against the wind, it seems like even though it's been years going, it seems like the majority of the public that have spoken about it.
I really thought you were going to go turn the page on me.
I think it's time to turn the page.
I really thought that's where he was going, Jesse. So solar moratorium, any, any opinion on that side?
I, I have asked the commissioners and as it stands right now, there is a solar moratorium. With, with what I understand, there is not a expiration date on that. But there is a large solar farm going in, in Southern Henry County.
Bellflower project is, is already approved and it's actively being built.
Yes.
But anything beyond that, there's a moratorium for future.
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right, Joey, third rail, let's go.
Let's see if I can step on it and just fry myself. So, uh, one thing that we have to be careful about is, and I joke with people about this. I said, the, the one thing that I know about Henry County is we're against everything. And I saw your list and I thought, there's actually some projects on here that we have campaigned against as a community that aren't even on your list.
Oh, this is not all inclusive.
Peaking plants on the west side of the county, uh, that's probably 25 years old now. Uh, there were people with signs picketing. Absolutely. Uh, our, our drinking water was going to be gone. Everyone was going to have cancer. Um,
Aaron Brockovich came to Henry County.
Yes. He's right. Um, and, and she looks a lot like Julia Roberts. It's amazing. I saw her in person. I was like, wow, she does look a lot like her.
Mercifully, that was the period of time, actually was a Rush County resident for a couple of years. So I was, I missed out on it.
So the, the issue that we have, and, and my point is we, we can't be against everything. That doesn't mean that every idea that comes across the, the, the desk of the commissioners needs to be approved. I have relatives who have lived in an area where a wind farm was built, um, more northern Indiana. I asked them their opinion of it. You have a house right here in your backyard. You're looking at wind turbines. And they said, yeah, we're, we're moving, we're building a house somewhere else. And they did. Um, they absolutely hated it. Um, to me, that comes back to that quality of life thing. Um, we got to look at, is it, is it worth the tax revenue that we're bringing in? If no one's going to want to live here. Um, now that's not the same with every single one of these projects. And that's why it's important to do these hearings, do the research, find out about it. I don't know a whole lot of people who moved away because of the peaking plant. It, it doesn't make a lot of noise. It didn't use up all the water. Um, it's not a nuisance. Is it the prettiest building there ever was? No. Um, but they pay their taxes. So each of those projects need to be looked at individually.
Do you have, if you're elected, would you be in favor of continuing a moratorium on solar? Or is that something you'd be willing to, to look at?
I, I would think it would have to be looked at. Um, again, I don't know a whole lot about, does that cause people to move to another county? Um, wind turbines? I mean, the people spoke loud and clear. This is something they did not want in this county.
I think that one is an obvious issue to anybody that's getting into this, into this field that Henry County is not going to be a place for.
But we have to be careful to get that reputation that we're just against everything. Cause that's not truly what, what this county is about. Um, but confined feeding operations. Um, that there was a lot of hysteria about that many years ago.
Ultimately, that one, they, they worked out a scoring system and we found a way to live peacefully with, with that. And it, I think the commissioners and the, the committee that worked on that did a really good job of building a scoring system that took the politics out of it.
Yeah.
So you didn't have to go before a board every time you wanted to build it. If you met certain requirements, you could just move forward. Really a nice model. Um, all right, Joey, let's stay with you. Henry County Memorial Park has, uh, has had about 20 park board members in the last seven years, me among them. Uh, I did, I did a short tour of duty. Uh, and there's been two superintendents where I think there's an opening. I don't know that they've hired a replacement superintendent yet. This county commissioners appoint the park board members. And that board has to work alongside, uh, at Henry County Expo Center, Henry County Saddle Club, a golf course, the Henry County Forge Association, uh, a new veterans museum. That's a, that's a 501(c)(3) as well. Um, what's, what's your vision for Memorial Park? What does it look like? It's, you know, the biggest public space that's owned and operated by the county. And Jesse was just talking about how younger millennial, millennials and Gen Z care about their open space and their trails, et cetera. What, what do you view the future of Memorial Park?
Sure. Um, I've been going to Memorial Park since I was a kid. That was always our family tradition. Go to, uh, Fourth of July fireworks. We, we spent the whole day having a picnic and, and enjoying that. So it's near and dear to my heart. Um, you, you, you hit on the big issue with Memorial Park, which is there are so many groups involved. Uh, you have different boards, you have different organizations. You have people with strong opinions. Um, and unfortunately what's happened and it's a matter of reputation. And, and once you tarnish your reputation, it takes a whole lot longer to build it back. But now the park has a reputation that it is a, it's just a wasteland of political infighting. Um, and so you have people, good people who don't want to serve on those boards anymore. You have people who don't want to be involved because of that reputation. And that might not be a, a earned reputation, but it's there now. And so that's the biggest challenge is, is coming, bringing those groups back together and saying, hey, we got to work together, um, to, to look like that we, we can manage this property. Um, and so the, the truth of the matter is, it's probably not as much of a mess as we all believe it to be. It's just that reputation. It's been tarnished. Um, and I don't think there's an overnight solution to that. It's going to take a lot of work from people. Um, because people have read in the newspaper, they've heard on podcasts that they believe that they don't want to be involved with that. Um, and that's unfortunate, um, because there have been a lot of good people who've been working to try to do good things out there. But it's a complex situation. Uh, my kids are in 4H, so we, we use the park from, from that standpoint. You have the saddle club. Um, you have a golf course. You, you have all these different groups. There's now a, uh, a veterans museum there with a lot of good people there that are running that. But, but you have this reputation that anything, any issue, any change is going to be a big political blow up. So nobody even wants to touch it. And that, and that's unfortunate, uh, because it is such a great property.
Joe, any thoughts on the park?
Well, I think it's unfolding as we speak, literally, I just left a council meeting where they were talking about, obviously talking about the expo and the, the veterans museum got some money from the food and beverage to do some work there. And it's, obviously they've done a very nice job putting together the veterans museum and, and, uh, what they did with the revitalization of the Smith building. Uh, it looks very nice and the big, the large shelter, they've done a lot of work with that. So there's been a lot of good work done by people, but the explosiveness of the interviews that literally have appeared on the front page of the newspaper about the park board is something that we're going to have to go get beyond. We have a very, very nice park that I, my parents took me there to ride the Curlicue slide when I was a kid. And it's just, it's always been a, it's, it's always been a very special place in my heart. When, when I was working there at the highway department, they had one of the longtime park, uh, superintendents left his position and, uh, they had me overseeing it for about two months. So I was over there periodically, then with the highway department and then going to the park board meetings and understanding a little bit about the finances and so forth. And I know it's a difficult thing to finance the park board and finance the park expenses. Years, years and years ago, they had a, they had a tax that was specifically for that park. And there were, there was, there were monies available to the memorial park. That obviously is not, has been long gone, but the park is a very important part of our county. And it's one that we need to get a handle on and hopefully sooner than later.
All right. Any, anything from you, Jesse, on the park issue? Uh, you're, you, you're obviously a Henry County citizen, but you're not, you're not in tune with the, you know, I don't think you have regular activities to bring you out there, but you've, you've seen it from a distance.
No, I mean, we used to go to, yeah, obviously when we were younger. Um, I, I don't, I don't go to the, the fireworks shows often anymore. But, um, I just, when we did go when we were younger, I felt like it was huge. I feel like there was like tons and tons of people and a lot of partying, like legit partying and not just like hanging out. Probably like you're saying, like all, an all day event. I don't feel like it's an all day event anymore. I feel like people show up. I could, correct me if I'm wrong. Is it? I feel like people show up like right when it's starting to happen.
For the, for the Fourth of July fireworks?
Yeah. Oh, it's an all day thing.
Yeah. I think, I think people put their.
Before the pandemic, it was still a big thing. I don't know.
Yeah. That field, the field that's right there on three, uh, where they have soccer would fill up. Yeah. Like all day and you'd have people barbecuing and. I was gonna say, probably what hurt, what hurts the park is probably not being able to get to it easily on foot. Like it's probably its biggest like downfall, but people probably don't get there as often as they would if they could get there easier on foot. So maybe solving that problem, put more attention on it. More people may be going to get involved, but, um,
You, you highlighted, you highlighted the fireworks and I think that is an important question. And we can ask Joey, the park board has said that they've lost their sponsor in, in Citizens Bank. They've, you know, they continue, they had it for a very long period of time. And now the park is saying, hey, we, they're applying for food and beverage money to pay, I guess for this year or maybe the next two years of fireworks. Is that food and beverage the right place to go? Should the commissioners be funding that out of the general fund? Should we find, find a way to find another independent sponsor?
I, I haven't studied it extensively. However, um, it, Fourth of July fireworks is a big draw. So my first gut reaction when you say visitor, uh, and beverage money, to me, that makes sense. You're bringing people into the community. They're going to be eating at restaurants. They're going to go, uh, visit the community. I feel like that, that makes sense. Um, when you have a sponsor that's paying for it, it's that much better. So, so I don't know, um, what the cost would be. Um, my guess would be it probably is not cheap to set off all those fireworks.
I, I want to say it's a $25 to $30,000 a year. I, I want to say it's a $25 to $30,000 a year expense if I'm, if I'm going off, off memory.
That's what they applied for through the food and beverage and based on their meeting that they had Monday. It was not included in the funding, but the mayor was there and indicated that there, there was going to be sponsorship for the fireworks. And it's, and it's a, a very big, big operation. Obviously in 2021, it was, it, it came back and it was, it was as big as ever. How did they fund it that year? I don't have any answer for that. I don't, I don't know.
I just, I was going to say the optics, right, of taking taxpayer money and blowing it up is pretty bad from my perspective, but me and Jeremiah made several jokes on it at our, you know, description. It just is like, you know, I feel like there's other things we could, I feel like maybe people don't, don't want to do the hard work. I don't know. To like, we have a lot of businesses, just go ask them for money.
Yeah. I, I, I think it's one of those things where it, it's a difficult to figure out how we as a community. Everyone would say we value fireworks. We love that, but how do we pay for it? You, you can't charge admission because people can sit in their backyards and see it. So you've got to find that sponsorship or, or that tax revenue way to pay for it. And we got to look at it from a government standpoint. Is there enough benefit to the community for that? There's lots of, lots of events like that that are important.
So we'll stay with Joey. I listed some items on here that I think are some marketable assets of Henry County. And I, I, I guess this is a, this is a very broad area of, you know, what do you think the assets are? What do you think draws people into the community? What do you think sets Henry County apart? And I, I said, hey, we have Westwood, we have Summit Lake State Park. We've got obviously a basketball heritage with the Hall of Fame, with the world's largest and finest fieldhouse, with the Knightstown Hoosier Gym. We've got a major push for youth sports. We've got the Henry County Saddle Club and CMP Newcastle Motorsports Park with, you know, the motorsports folks that come in from all over the, all over the world to Newcastle to do high end go-kart racing. What's, what's the gem? What do we, what do we market? What's exciting for Henry County? What makes us unique?
I think you hit all of them. I mean, those are, those are all great, great reasons. I spend a lot of my time at Summit Lake. I'm a, a nature and wildlife enthusiast and it's amazing. The wildlife we have out there and it's just a beautiful, beautiful place. They're doing a lot of work to restore prairie lands out around the park and anyone who hasn't been out there needs to go out there. We mentioned earlier Newcastle Motorsports Park. I'm passionate about that. I, I love racing. I love going fast. I'm not allowed to anymore. Our twins were about three months old when I broke my arm racing out there. And my wife is like, no more racing. You're done.
See, if, if this was me.
I flipped that cart good.
I would have, I would have tried to renegotiate and I would have said, no more go-karts, but I'm okay with a roll cage. Like I would have, I'd So, but I'm a sales guy, so I'm a negotiator, Joey.
That's right. That's right. So, but, but you've hit all the good ones. The, the gym down in Knightstown, I've gone to many, many events down there. Every time I walk in there, I'm like, this is, this is cool. This is neat. This is, this is awesome that people have put so much effort into keeping that open and used. My girls throughout Girl Scouts have had many, many events down there. And every single time that I'd walk in there, I'd be like, this, this is awesome. And I like how on social media that the, the historic gym will post pictures of groups from all over the country that come just to shoot the basketball around, take the picture. It's a, it's a neat place.
And we'll go from Joey to Joe. This is, you guys, you gotta have a J name to run for this office.
Obviously it's, it's hard to disagree with, with the list that you've provided and all of those are, are gems of the county. I happen to live across the road from Summit Lake State Park. And at first, when we first started this campaign, I was beginning to think he was stalking me because he's always got that big, long camera lens out.
I was in his driveway.
He's out there looking.
That's extra creepy.
Looking to see what Joe's wearing today. Got photos.
Just today alone, the eagles were just soaring over my house and I wouldn't bother them. I was just watching them to see what they were going to get to eat, but, but Joey's out there in the weeds with that camera. And he does, he does provide some beautiful pictures.
Does he wear a ghillie suit when he shows up in your yard? Nature paparazzi popping out of shrubs.
I'll, I'll not go there.
Well, at least he's clothed.
But he, and, and all the, the, I mean, the Westwood Park is, is, is beautiful. The, the horse trails that they have there are just incredible. He mentioned, Joey mentioned the, the walking trail and the running trail, biking trail there through Middletown and the other trails that we have that Jeff Ray and the healthy communities have worked on for so long. We have a number of trails. When I was on the side of working with the county highway department, when we would apply for monies, there, there were always monies set aside by the state for, for green purposes, for trails. And I always wished that we could have more road money instead of more trail money. But the fact is the state sold to it years and years ago to set aside money for trails. And that's where they've gotten their grant money from. And the commissioners have been, have, have used their, their number to apply, to apply for those grants. And it's worked out very well. Jeff Ray and that group have done a good job.
You did mention roads and it's probably a good time to work on a question that I saw come up in our chat from city councilman, in Newcastle city councilman, Mike Guffey. And he said, he would like to have the input of the candidates on your thoughts on the proposed I-70 and 103 interchange. So right now there's not an interchange there, but it's the, the Jerry Walden, it's not in Memorial. That would be terrible to say. It's the Jerry Walden Memorial Interchange, but that's the, that's the
Honorary.
The honorary. That's still Kenny Schrader joke. He wants the, the Kenny Schrader memorial race while he's still living out at IP 55 Speedway. The Jerry Walden interchange, any, any views on, on bringing that to Henry County, Joe?
My personal opinion would be, I think it would be great to have an interchange at 103 and I-70. I can't imagine that it's in the works in the next four or five years, or we would have heard about it. Like we've heard about the fact that they're studying to put a, around about it at the west leg of where US 40 goes south to State Road 3. And then the, what I saw in the paper was they were actually talking about wanting US 30, US 36 and Raider Road. Those are the two places that I've heard that they're talking about around about, which would bring us up to Hamilton County standards.
Would be right there with them. But I mean, would, would you see an advocacy for it? Cause I, I think you've seen the city council, a number of city council members step up and say, hey, yes, we want this for Newcastle. So would you see, would you see a benefit for, for the county to, to step up and make, you know? We, we've been asking this question of the folks running for, for state representative as well. Is it something that they, that the commissioners getting involved would move the needle on?
I would, I would think that the commissioners of Henry County would have some opportunity to voice their opinion about that, about that particular topic. I just, I just know that would be a, a very much an NDOT deal because of the expense and so forth. And, and how many times do you see them put new interchanges in unless it's a 210 mile marker going to Hamilton Town Center or something like that?
I was going to say there's, I, this is obviously Henry County news, but in Hancock County, they have this like idea that 1050 where Eastern Hancock is. They believe that one day this is going to happen. And it would make probably more sense for that one to actually exist because they, to get there, you have to get off a green filter, nice time like backpack. But I, to me, I didn't even know this was a thing, but it, it seems like it's just going to be one of those like rumors that continue for a decade or two and it never comes.
In the northern end of the county, the closest interchange we have is I-69, 236. I've lived there my whole life. People have been talking about, wouldn't that be great? And from a convenience standpoint, as someone who drives over the interstate into another city through 12 stoplights to get on, I've always thought, man, that would be awesome. However, there's so many issues with that land use. Is there enough space for it? Is this in the original design of the interstate? As Joe said, it's a, it's a big NDOT thing. And for my entire life, it's never happened at 236, 969.
And we did hear on, I think last week or two weeks ago on the show, that NDOT is planning on redoing that 236 bridge like next year.
Sure.
So.
The bridge is about to fall down. So that's probably a good idea.
You're going to find it. You're going to find a new bridge there, but unless something happens really quickly, you're not going to see that interchange happening.
Isn't going to happen. Now, Joe did bring up roundabouts, which, which I love talking about because as a paramedic, I go on a lot of car accidents. This, this is something we see a lot. And I have co, or paramedics that I know that, that work in Hamilton County where they have a lot of roundabouts. And they say it's the boringest job now because they don't have good wrecks anymore.
I don't know that when they, when they put the roundabout in there on the south, just north of I-69 in Anderson, I saw an awful lot of people turn left into that thing over by the B.
So they actually, like Iowa is real big on roundabouts right now. So let's, you know, we don't want to be like Hamilton County, but we could be like Iowa. Iowa has done studies and they've shown a 90% reduction in fatal crashes at intersections. I mean, that's huge. That's huge.
My fear, like if you put in more exchanges, you're going to have way more accidents there, just like you do at 109 and
So I know that's controversial, but I'm a, I'm a big advocate of roundabouts. I hate sitting in traffic and I love moving. I love going fast and you can go fast around, around about. I just hate sitting in traffic waiting on that light to turn.
I think for state roads coming together in a somewhat rural area, which is what we see at 70 and rather at 40 and three. It's very similar to what you see in North Vernon with the new highway 50 and three and seven and some other, others that intersect there. And I think they, they do work perfectly. And I think it's a very similar location, which you have down, down in Jennings County to Henry. So.
They are expensive to build. They take up a lot of, of land. One, one thing that Iowa, whenever people question them on all the roundabouts they're putting in that they put out the number that one fatality on the roadway costs society $6 million. You've got lost earnings. You've got medical bills. You've got insurance claims, lawsuits, attorneys. It's a big drag on everybody to have a fatal accident. So if you can reduce those accidents on your roadways, there, there's a huge savings. Now, there's an investment upfront. It costs a lot of money to build these.
And we're, we're spending a lot of time talking about state roads now. And obviously the commissioners have, have a view on county or over county roads. Do you have any input? Oh, you get the chance before Joe, because I don't, if I give Joe the road question first, it could, it could go 25, 30 minutes.
He's the expert on this. My, my, from my experience as a volunteer firefighter for the last very long time, the, the intersection that is a county road with a state road that is very, very dangerous is Raider Road and 36. There's a house that's very close there. To me, that needs some work. And of course that would be cooperation between NDOT and the county to kind of figure out what the solution would be there. You have school traffic. You have all the traffic from Middletown coming towards Newcastle. There's really no other way out of Middletown. And so to me, that needs looked at, what, what the solution should be there. A roundabout would make a lot of sense.
All right, Mr. Wiley.
Is the question about roads?
Yes, essentially.
County roads.
Commissioners and county roads. And if you think we had a good path? Any major changes or strategy that we need to change? We'll give you two minutes because I know you could literally go for, you could teach the class on this.
As an Indiana state police officer, as a trooper working this county, I, I found my way around the county for years and thought we need some work on these roads. And then when I was available after I took my retirement, I spoke with the commissioners and they were offered me the job. And I spent almost 16 years scratching my head, trying to figure out how to fix the problems that are, are the county roads. The monies that were available, I hope to think that we spent them properly. I hope to think that we did some things that helped roads become safer. But there was never enough money, never enough people. And the construction season in Henry County in Indiana is only from one finger to the next. It's only a few months when it comes to when you can actually use hot mixed asphalt or chip seal. The, the funding is such that the money to fix county roads in Henry County comes from the motor vehicle highway fund. The motor vehicle highway fund gets its money from gas tax. In the state of Indiana, when a person purchases a gallon of gasoline or on-road diesel, they pay X amount of pennies in gas tax for every gallon. That money is collected at the state level and divvied out by formula to the, to all of the participating with the counties and cities and municipalities that have roads. And that's where the money comes from. It doesn't come from anything else other than the, the road tax. That's what pays for the road repairs in Henry County. And then in addition to that, for many years, we were successful in getting community crossing grant money. A million dollars a year for five or six years in a row. Been a very good program based through the state of Indiana. The money is, is funneled through because of the gas tax. But many counties and municipalities have taken advantage of that. Mount Summit has taken advantage of it. Middletown, other communities in Knightstown, other communities in, in Henry County have taken advantage of the, the community crossing grant fund. And then the, obviously the big, the big money is in the bridges and the, there is a, there is monies available to apply for, to get federal aid money to replace and repair bridges and of which there's 136 in Henry County that are in excess of 20 feet long. That's, there's, there's a lot of money that have, has been spent, will continue to be spent. And it's just directing and coming up with a, with what roads need to be fixed, what roads need to have work on. That's a, a question that has always been around and will continue to be around. We can score the roads with different factors as far as which ones are the most traveled. Which ones have the most residences on them that people use the road or, or a various, a number of various reasons as to how you score them. But the determination needs to be where can we spend these valuable dollars that we have to make Henry County roads safer? And, and, and less pothole filled.
This is the, this is pothole season. This, this free thaw cycle between now and about mid-April is the, you're going to get peak, peak potholes. All right. So let's, let's talk just real briefly and we don't have to spend much time on this at all, but the Henry County Detention Center opened this week and it's been a big issue in county government. Do you have any, any, any views on, on the new facility? And if it needs support, if it's, are we on a good path and we're good to go?
I've listened to the commissioners and the council talk about this for 12 years, I think. And, and at 20 minutes till three yesterday, I pulled in the parking lot of the new Henry County Justice Center Sheriff's Office and I was about 200th in line. It was a beautiful day. It was a wonderful turnout. Cannot believe how nice it is. And it's here in Henry County. And Sheriff McCorkle made the statement that it was, that actually came in under budget and something to the tune of $23 million, I believe is what I read. But the facility itself is something like you, like you would, like we saw on TV several years ago with I think Oz or one of those prison TV shows where they would have the pods and they have the, the guards are up above looking down through. It's, it's extremely well-built building appears. The, the ground, the 6.6 acres was obtained through the state of Indiana. Tom Saunders stated that he had made some contacts with, with the Department of Administration and, and the ground was actually given to Henry County, which was at a savings of $700,000 some thousand dollars. And then, and then the plans, as I understood, there was two different counties that had just recently received state approval for a specific plan for a jail. That's what we want. So we're going to use those plans that have been approved.
They just copied and pasted it.
There was, there was a lot of money saved by doing it that way. According to what I heard yesterday from the commissioners and the council and, and the sheriff and so forth. It appears to me to be a, a gem of the county, even though it's the detention center, but it's got the treatment facilities for obviously the folks that need treatment. There, there's, there's going to be classes. They've got a program set up to where they, they're, they'll be able to hopefully help some folks that need help rather than just incarceration. And, but it was very impressive, very impressive.
Very good. Joey, any comments on the new detention center?
Well, I, I think it's a difficult thing for taxpayers to get excited about paying for a jail. I, quick survey, guys in the room, how many of you have been in the jail in Henry County?
I've been, I, when I ran for county council, I visited the other one.
Okay.
But I've never, I've never been in voluntarily.
Been in there. I've been in there. Have you been?
Nope.
Producer?
No, I've never been.
Okay.
I may never see.
Our, our current facility, I was not an inmate. I, I was there on medical calls many times.
It was horrific.
It was horrible. It was absolutely horrible. It was inhumane. And that's why the lawsuits came. It was a bad facility. It was, it was overburdened. So it is good to see that being built. Again, I'm a taxpayer who doesn't get super excited about not building schools, but building detention centers. But it's, it's needed and it was far, far overdue. The old facility was just, I mean, they had stacked people on top of people. There were holes in the walls to the outside. They could get contraband right to the street. So they had to put a fence around it just to keep the people back from the walls. from the walls. I mean, the sewage situation was horrible. The whole thing was just disgusting. So, um, from that standpoint, it's good that we have a modern facility. Um, but again, it's, it's hard to get too excited about spending money on that.
So now that Bob Seeger, and we can actually turn the page, we've accomplished something and we move on, we move on to what's next.
Is there any plans for the old building?
What I had heard was they're going to use that for, uh, some records keeping. Um, there's, there's a lot of county records that have to be kept forever.
They didn't put any space in the new building for that?
They're in.
We have to keep the other one.
They're in various buildings. And then I'd heard a rumor, they might be putting some of the EMTs over there. And I'm like, wow.
It was, we, we just said it's uninhabitable.
It's a disgusting building.
And y'all want to send the EMTs in there?
Doesn't the EMT money come from the food and beverage tax?
There is, there is no tax money that goes towards the EMTs in Henry County. It's all from billing of the ambulance runs.
What was the thing that they used for, that we went to a meeting for?
They use some COVID money to buy an ambulance.
Oh, this was way before that.
Yeah.
We went to a meeting up at the park and they were, because we were like, look, they're raising taxes like 70%, which was.
There was a public, a public safety tax. It wasn't, that's not food beverage.
That's not for the ambulance service. That would be for other.
That, that paid for other, yeah, some other, other various items. That was a five, five, six year ago issue.
Yeah. Hopefully we do not put the EMTs in jail.
All right, Joey, let's, let's talk about an issue that, that, uh, that has never, we've never seen any traction on this, but we've discussed it on Boss Hogg a number of times. Are you aware that to have backyard chickens in Henry County, you're supposed to have five acres of land?
I did not know that.
So if, if there's a 4H family that wants to raise two hens, or if we're coming out of a pandemic and you can't, you got empty grocery store shelves, you can't have two or three hens in your yard. They'll sell you the thing at Rural King, the little, the little chicken coop that's all self-contained and good to go. You can buy your chicken feed. You can get all of this stuff, but you can't legally cite it. And in fact, the zoning administrator and the health department will come out and they'll red tag you and take your chickens away. And I, God only knows what, what pot they put the chicken in when they kill it on you. But it, it, you gotta have five acres to have backyard chickens.
Sure. I, I have no information about chickens. Um, our family is in the rabbit business, uh, through 4H we've done.
My God, I don't even know about rabbits. They could be in danger as well.
We currently do not have any rabbits in our backyard though. We, we borrow some space from a farmer nearby. Um, our first rabbit that, that Audrey got, um, she named it. She had a little cage for it. She, we, we, we bought the little thing, the enclosure. We put it behind our little shed. She went out two nights later, came back in. She goes, I think something's wrong with Rosie. It had died. So we haven't had a lot of good luck with residential rabbits. So we're now at a farm where they, they have the proper ventilation, all that. So, um, have you looked into the Marion County Indianapolis situation with chickens downtown? Have you heard about this?
There, there are.
There's a, there's an Indianapolis Star reporter, I believe, who owns some chickens. So it's become a big issue down there. Um.
Marion County has famously had resident, has had.
Do they allow it?
Backyard poultry. Yes.
Yes.
They have legalized.
So if they allow it. Come on. Five acres you need to have to have a chicken.
You're supposed to have five acres to have any hen. So, and it, coming out of the pandemic, I think, I think people can see you go to, you go to Kroger and the, the, it's not there. So you can't, you know, you can plant a garden.
Yeah.
But you can't, you can't have your own, you know.
Now, I do have, I do have some friends of mine that, um, just live out in the country. They famously have had loose chickens and they actually got sued because a vehicle crashed in front of their property. And, uh, when the accident report was done, they said they swore for a chicken and their insurance companies got their attorneys and said, that's not our fault. And they actually got sued because of it. So I know you can't have loose chickens or you will be held liable for it.
Yeah. We can't be the Key West of, of, of Eastern Indiana.
Those things are fun. They'll come right up to you at the restaurant.
Joe, any, any thoughts on, uh, on backyard chickens? Or does my, do my chickens have to identify as parakeets? Cause those are legal.
I asked one of the commissioners prior to this meeting, because I have not done any research on backyard chickens. I had llamas and years ago to go along with Joey's story, I, my, one of my sons had a, a rabbit in 4H and we had him tattooed like you're supposed to. And, uh, I say him, we thought it was a her and found out that.
Had a sex change between the tattoo and the.
We actually had to go back through the book and white out all the he and put she, or put all the she's and put he, but it turned into, um, to Wambo Rabbit. But at any rate, that was the rabbit story. And the, this, the answer I got from the commissioner was that there was, there's a five, five acre plot in order to have livestock. I said, I'm not talking about livestock. I'm talking about chickens, chickens, chickens. What about chickens? He said, well, I don't know. So I don't have an answer for you.
I, I'm here to tell you that chickens are viewed as livestock. So my, my, my little 4H leader bully pulpit, I want to have three hens in my backyard. I pay taxes in Henry County moment. Please look, put a little exemption in there for, for a guy to have a few chickens to, to put some eggs in the house.
It's my understanding that obviously there's opportunities for special exemptions or, or zoning approvals or whatever. So I, I don't, I don't have a better answer for you about the chickens.
All right. I'll, I'll quit beating Dakota's dead horse that he forgot to show up for, but we put it in here exclusively for him and Beazer Creek. All right. Just a couple little areas I wanted, I wanted to hit on, then we'll, we'll turn it loose. Cause I think we're just about out of time. Joey, how much, how much time should a commissioner have to spend? Is this a full-time job? Should it be a full-time job?
Every waking moment. So as someone once told me, um, you know, you, you can't spend your whole life working. So commissioner is a part-time job right now. Whoever gets elected needs to spend time with their family. They need to have a life outside of being commissioner. It can't be an all encompassing thing. They need to be dedicated to the community, do the best they can. Um, but currently it is, it is a part-time job. There's three part-time commissioners. Um, I strongly feel that if the workload becomes so much that a full-time commissioner is needed, um, our county could look at options like other counties use where you have like a county administrator who reports to the commissioners. Um, I don't think we're at that point or even close to that point right now. Um, but yeah, you, you can't spend every waking moment. Um, and a lot of these, um, um, elected positions that are part-time are that way so that you can get someone who has experience outside of that job. Um, and so you get an opportunity to have commissioners who have a wide variety of experiences. Um, so I don't see it becoming full-time.
Any, any expectation for the time commitment, Joe?
From the eight different commissioners that I worked with there when I was working for the county, there were eight different personalities and eight different people spent different amounts of time. Some spent very, very much almost like a full-time job and, and sometimes it's even more than a full-time job. But I think, I think there needs to be time away from the job. It's set up to be a, a part-time job now. And I don't have any problem with that.
All right. And the, uh, the last item I had, Jesse, Jesse may have more questions in his pocket that, uh, that he has, he's been awful quiet on me lately. He's, he's saving one up.
Every time I talk to you, stop being so.
He's, he's, he's just a brutalist, Joey.
Go back and watch the tape.
The, the Kenny County Council's been debating today on how to spend or what to do with the food and beverage tax, Joe. Um, and there's been rumor, I, there were some bills that advanced that actually didn't become law, but there's this feeling that maybe the state is going to take away the food and beverage tax opportunities from communities like Henry County. Um, do you have any, any view on that from, from your seat as a potential commissioner?
Based on being at the meeting Monday evening, when they were discussing the food and beverage, and I listened to the, the people that had applied for the, the specific grants, and I listened to the people that were assigned to the committee that graded the certain, the grants. And I listened to the council members that had questions and so forth. And they had a follow-up meeting today at 3:30 that went until almost time for this to start. And they were still going when I left and they had, um, they had decided that they were going to disperse, the way I understood it, they were going to disperse the cash on hand to specific projects throughout the county. And then they were discussing whether or not they were going to bond, uh, other monies. And, and then by doing that, addressing additional, um, programs that, that had applied for the, for the money.
All right. Joey, any thoughts on food and beverage?
Well, um, you know, historically I, I believe it was set up in this county for the, um, basketball hall of fame originally is why that kind of got rolling. Um, and so if we look at that historic record of what it's accomplished, it's accomplished some pretty, pretty awesome stuff here in our community. Um, so I don't feel like I would be against using it for that next project that, that brings some, uh, quality of life to our community.
So keep the, keep the club in the tool bag for the, uh, for, for the future. Um, Jesse, anything, anything else from you?
So they're wanting to get rid of it?
There's been some momentum at the state house to, to say that counties can no longer have this tax. Um.
Is it because there's like gross overuse of it from their eyes? Why, why are they doing it? Like, maybe that's more important. That's the question. It's like, why do they want to get rid of it? Are they wanting to raise it like statewide and?
No, I, I, I think that a lot of communities have it and it's not, uh, it, there are some people that just want to eliminate a tax essentially. So we, there's this discussion of local control versus state control.
Why don't they lower the state tax?
Uh, and there, there are communities that potentially abused it, but essentially it would have, the bill that was introduced last year or this last cycle that just finished would have stripped it away. So there's a very real potential that as the next general assembly meets, that it would come, that would have come out and communities like Henry County would lose that ability to tax.
It just seems crazy. I don't, I don't understand the point. I mean, I, I don't, not that I don't want it. I, it's go away, whatever. I don't care.
Thoughts on that, Jesse? If you did a good, if you do a poor job with it, then you're going to lose that revenue because the idea is to invest it back in the stuff that creates tax revenue with food and beverage. So you want like tourist things like, like.
Which is what we've talked about on the show.
So, yeah. So if you're using it poorly, then you're just gonna kind of stuff yourself out anyway, but.
I was gonna say, like, the other question, I guess is, again, I don't know if anyone knows this, but it's like, is the state keeping, like, do they audit what is being spent on? Does this county required to report it?
Absolutely.
And then maybe, yeah, if counties have a terrible track record, it's like, yeah, well, you built that and nothing happened. Like your population growth is sank, which Henry County would technically be in the, um, in that category. I wouldn't say it.
Henry County's been flat.
It's flat. It was sinking, but it has flattened out. Um, and it might be a little uptick, but, um, yeah, I guess like maybe they need to consider reporting structures, but I got, my, I guess like if you're saying someone wants to get rid of the tax, obviously it's gonna be a Republican. What, it's like, if you want to lower the taxes, then just lower your state tax, like the state part of it, not the county part. But the only reason I can see they want to get rid of it is because they want to increase the sales tax and they don't want people to complain. And if they end up paying the same, getting rid of it.
And that's out.
And that's out that you're not, your taxes didn't go up.
All right.
It's like a smooth, like side of, sleight of hand trick.
So we are getting to the point where we've worked our way through the program show notes and we, we generally go through final thoughts. We'll start with, we'll start with Joe. Uh, is there anything that we, that you're running your campaign on that we've missed? Any issues that we should be getting into? Any, anything that you feel like we need to get back to that we might've skipped, skimmed over?
No, I think you've done a fine job and I, I feel, uh, feel good about being here. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve the county as a county commissioner. If I'm, if I make it through the primary and if, if I happen to make it through the general election, then I would look forward to, to serving that capacity. And, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be in here.
All right. And if folks want to learn more about you, get a yard sign, volunteer, any of that stuff, how do they, how do they reach out?
I have a, oh, a Facebook page, Joe Wiley for County Commissioner. Um, I have a Facebook page, just Joe Wiley, W I L E Y. My phone number is 765-520-0314. Um, I'm having a fundraiser at 1,000 degree pizza Tuesday, April the 5th from four to eight. And I have some yard signs. If anybody would like to have one, I'd be glad to provide them with one. And I really, great.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's all very good. We appreciate you being here, man.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
And, uh, and Mr. Joey Cooper?
Well, I'm, I'm going to say something first before I talk about me.
All right.
I've always admired Joe Wiley and tonight I learned something new about him with his education background that I didn't know about. I always knew he's a state trooper and, and what he had done for the county before. So, um, my family's long line of educators, college professors. Uh, my dad currently works for a school corporation and, um, I've been an educator before. So I really admire anybody that goes out there and teaches. So, so, um, I've always liked Joe. And so kind of today I found out why even more. So, so I appreciate him. Um, so from my standpoint, people can get ahold of me on Facebook as well. Uh, there's a Joey Cooper for Commissioner, uh, Facebook page. They can message me on there. Um, I have yard signs if anybody needs one. Um, I'm probably the only candidate who had the guts in the county to put this picture on it. Even his ugly bald face. Oh, there he is. There's Joe too.
They literally, they are the first two candidates they bring. If you're listening to the podcast, they bring their signs in and they, it's their little name placard and it sits in front of them on the show. And I think you are the first two candidates to put your faces on the signs.
I was hesitant because I thought, you know, graffiti and all that. I mean, I was a kid once. I, I know how it works. So, uh, but you know, I, I wanted people to see who I really was. So, so we're out there and Joe's got his picture on, on his signs as well. So.
Not all of them, just the special one.
And I just.
Did want to say, um, when I, I've known Joey Cooper's family for many years because I had been interviewed through the Middletown newspaper when I was working for the county highway department. So when I made the determination, I was going to sign up, I signed up and I drove to Middletown and I knocked on the door of the Middletown newspaper. I said, I need to see Joey Cooper. And his mother said, well, he's not here. He's sleeping. I said, that's no excuse. I need to talk to Joey Cooper.
Wake him up.
So I left my phone number and he called me and we chatted for a while. And, and, uh, obviously I'd, I'd known him from when he worked for the ambulance service. And so I, I don't have anything saying, anything but positive thoughts about Joey Cooper. And,
I appreciate that, Joe. Thank you.
But I ask him if he wanted to arm wrestle and just call it good. But, uh, that we're, we're good and gonna see, see what happens on May the 3rd, I guess, unless you run some kind of a independent poll.
I, I got nothing. It's, I, I will say that as we're, as we're starting to wrap up here, that, uh, I believe that the deadline to register to vote, I read this in today's Middletown news, actually, uh, hand delivered to my, in my, in my mailbox today by the postal service. Uh, you've got until the 4th to get registered. So if you plan on voting in the, in the May primary and you're not yet registered or you're not registered where you belong, uh, you've got until the 4th to get that fixed. Otherwise you're out of luck until the fall. But if you want to be a participant in this race, you've got, uh, you got till May 4th to get that done. Jesse, you got any, any final thoughts? Any questions? Anything we left out? Any, uh, any hot stock tips?
No hot stock tips. Uh, right now the game's still tied.
Xavier 61, Texas A&amp;M 61.
This is the only time you'll ever hear, I don't care about sports. Um, no, I think that's good. I think, I kind of wish I could have asked earlier. I just, I'd be curious, like on the transition out to understand, and maybe you guys have asked that question, but to think about like, what are the things the commissioners are doing that doesn't make it public that are, makes the job hard, right? Like internally. Uh, there's probably like, I always feel like the people aren't spending enough time, like thinking about making that side of the job easier. Um, cause it, it seems like it's just always like pencils and paperwork or pens and paperwork. So.
Well, I know when, when I started working for the county, um, the county did not have a human resources department. So at that time, the commissioners, uh, were in charge of onboarding new employees, doing all that. That's since changed. So that's one of those positive things. But it's, uh, it amazes me how much falls on the commissioners, um, at, at a county like Henry County, because we're on the smaller side of government. We really are not that big of a place. Um, so again, it used to be, um, all, all, everything that human resources used to do fell on the commissioners and that's no longer the case. We have a professional that does that now. Um, but, but there's, there's a lot that, that goes through the commissioner's office.
Have to approve the payroll for all the county employees, have to approve all the claims from the different departments. And it's, it's quite involved and they, they're sitting in their office sometimes with a considerable stack of paper where they have to sign here, sign here, sign here. But that's part of it. I mean, they have to, they have to figure out what they're going to do to fix the elevator in the, in the courthouse. I mean, everything, the, the buildings, whether or not they're going to sell them, the, the ones that are vacant and so forth. Uh, so there, there's a lot to the job. Um, but it's one that's worthwhile. And I think it's, it'd be a good challenge.
I was gonna say, there's, there's a lot of the back of the house stuff that I don't think people think about that would, if you're in there, if you can clean up some of it so then, you know, whenever you have to hand the keys over to the next person that you also cleaned up where you're at.
And that's probably the most frequent question I get from voters. And they're like, hey, that's. And they're like, hey, that's great. You're running. What the heck does that job do? And, and I think Joe and I both spend a lot of time explaining to people kind of what the job is.
You're, you're one of three county executives.
I'm like, it's like a mayor, but it's three-headed and you've got to vote on everything.
Yeah.
Very good. Any, anything from you, Zach? I kind of skimmed over you.
No, don't have much. This weather's awful. I do feel sorry for anybody running a highway department in this part of the state or country this time of year when it's 70, then it's 20, then it's 12, then it's back to 70. And then invariably when it chills out, it rains. So everything just freezes. But yeah, um, I wish I was back in warm Tennessee.